Already, I think we're ready to get started. My name is Conrad Ely. I will be starting this presentation. I'm a Habitat Restoration Project Manager and currently I'm the interim project manager on the Secet project. I worked closely with Gina Christensen, who was working on this project for the last year. And unfortunately, we lost her. She moved down to California, but she's very happy in her new role. And she is very interested and continuing to hear about the progress of this. So she, she has family in Oregon. I'm sure she'll be visiting if I see her around over the years, coming back to the project site. But a little bit about my background, I've been with TDP for a year and a half. I was actually working on the Secet project before Gina was hired. I was involved with fundraising, securing one of the OWEB grants that were currently funded under. And I've been on the technical team the entire time that I've been with TDP. And I will be helping to onboard the next project manager. We will hope to have onboard by the next town hall meeting, which will be June 17th, same time, same location. So with that, we can get started, Hunter, if you want to go to the next slide. So yeah, quick agenda. So we'll have some introductions from OPRD and ESA, which is the engineering contractor that's doing the work for us right now. Discuss staffing changes, some of the MOU that was reaching OPRD. Quality assurance project plan. And then ESA will give an update as to where they are with all the work that they're doing. We have no results that we'll be presenting at this time. The results and the alternatives analysis will be being presented at the June meeting. But we just wanted to get back together. We try to do these, you know, three or four times a year, just to let the community know where we're at with the project and what's going on. And then we'll discuss the upcoming activities. So yeah, like I said. Hunter White is the Civil and Water Resources Engineer, who is on your screen up there, and he'll be giving our presentation here in a moment.
Hi, everyone.
Yeah. And then we've got, would you guys like to introduce yourselves, Kristy?
Getting up here just to make sure I'm on the screen. Hunter, I want to make sure we're recording. Is that right?
Yes, looks like Conrad started the recording.
Great. I'm up here so that I'm on the screen for whoever's watching on the video later. So I'm Kristy Foster. I'm the Executive Director with Tillamook Estuaries Partnership. So you'll see me on a lot of the emails that are coming through. So I just wanted to introduce myself. I've been involved in this project, obviously, from a higher level for the entire time that I've been the executive director. And we are, I'll be talking with you a little bit about the quality assurance plan that's been put in place. I can answer any questions. Staffing changes that are going on, and I'm here for a resource if you have any questions along the way. Hello. And excuse me, I've lost my voice. So if you need me to repeat myself, please go ahead and just tell me to do so.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys need to come up or not, but we've got Noel here and Trevor. And then is it Chris? Yeah, Chris from OPRD. And we've got names and job titles here. And then we've got all of the other staff that are working on this at the moment. For reference, and if anybody is interested in contacting any of these individuals, they can get in touch with me, and I will get you in touch with them. And my email address, I believe, is listed later in the presentation. If it's not, I've got business cards in the back. Next slide. Quickly for reference, this is just a quick shot of where Secet is located and the part we're discussing in the Sand Lake estuary. All right. So why, why is this part happening? There is currently failed, well, it's actually not really tied gate anymore. It's more of a culvert. The door is officially come off of that tide gate. So yeah, the flops are missing, the dike is brooding. The box culvert is compromised. If you go out and walk the dike, which I'm sure many of you have, the erosion is pretty precipitous. It's chewed away, you know, each time I go out there, which is, you know, about once a month. It's visibly decorated almost every time as I come out. And the amount of work that would be done to stabilize it, with triggerfish dying capacity regulations, which are always a challenge when you're dealing with tide gates. And so we have to, you know, consider this from a higher level. But yeah, specifically the tide gate itself is supersized. It's a velocity barrier for fish. That's moving at about 10 times the rate that would allow for fish passage. And it is only spot along the entire dike that is water transfer between the backside of the dike, or sorry, dike and the estuary itself. Hunter, did you have videos in this part or is it later in the presentation that we're sharing videos?
It'll come up in, as we talk about the water level monitoring, we've got a couple of videos that do show the water rushing, kind of this fire hose water velocity mentioned here. You'll see the water rushing out the backside of the tide gate or the culvert and really leading to not only the fish passage velocity barrier, but also scour and erosion on the dike itself and undermining the box culvert. So we do have a couple of videos of that coming up.
Okay, well, we'll get to that later. I will say that if anybody was not at the previous town hall and is interested in more of the background on this. The previous town hall is about an hour long and we have that reported. It's on the OPRD Secet website. It's got a pretty deep dive into the background of the site and the project and why we're doing this. But in order, you know, to keep, to keep short on time, so we're going to move forward and not repeat too much that was discussed at the last town hall. That being said, what we are currently working on is the belt study, Belt Marsh, the breach of the dike to allow for natural tidal processes while maintaining recreational activity. And then all of the Habitat Restoration improvements for fish passage appearing habitat that will come about once the estuaries open up. Beyond that, we have been investigating tier L Mar flooding issues and specifically, you know, some of the stormwater systems in place and investigating why, you know, why there are pooling issues around tier L Mar and how the drainage could potentially be improved through some engineering design. And then, once, once the dike breach and the estuary component of the project have been addressed, the Sand Lake Road culverts on Renneke, Belts and No Name Creek will all be being replaced by Tillamook County Public Works. But we can't address those culverts until we understand what's happening with this. So those will be coming as the second component of the project.
Was that one culvert that you mentioned in there? Is that the one that's plugged up right there by the edge of the state park where the?
Yeah, that would be Renneke.
Renneke, it used to go under the road. Now it's going down.
It's diverted. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah. So that will eventually be being replaced with a bridge. But the feasibility will need to be done on that.
And it'll go back and around the outhouse and down?
I'm not totally certain. I think that they'll have to do an engineering analysis to figure out exactly where it'll cross it.
Because that diverts it completely outside of the dike anyway, where we're picking up a lot of water there.
Yeah, yeah, that'll, that will be addressed. Once we understand what's happening, we have to start it. Start in the estuary and move upstream. So once we know what's happening in the estuary, then it could be, you know, they'll design all of those culverts. And I think right now, they are fundraising to get engineering design started on that particular crossing. Yeah, so this is a quick, this is the timeline of the project from its inception to where we are currently. We're in phase one, addressing the alternatives analysis of 30% design for the dike breach and the setback dike in the estuary. And we are also fundraising for the OPRD's two, which I'm going to do momentarily. You can go on to the next slide. This is a quick overview of our schedule for the 30% design. I know that it's difficult to see this in the audience right now, but I think on the recording, you should be able to go back and look into these elements. But this is just an updated timeline as to where we're at. Too critical on here for today's meeting, but like I said, these start items are deliverables that will be addressed at the June 17th. So yeah, you can move on. So yeah, currently we're operating under grants for phase one, the Missouri Coastal Watershed Grant, Coastal Wetland Grant, I'm sorry. The Oregon Watershed Handbook Work System Grant and the PGW Habitat Support Funds. So currently, phase one, sorry, phase one is completely funded and we are hoping to have all of these materials completed by the end of the year. Go ahead, next slide. As for funding for phase two, which will incorporate 60%, 90%, final designs and permitting, there are larger grant opportunities. So instead of having to just fund 60%, like we would traditionally do, some of these larger grant opportunities are allowing us to request funding for the entire suite of designs. So we're going to try to get it all funded in one fell swoop. Currently, we have applied for the Noah International Habitat Grant. That was applied for in September. We were not funded. That grant is being released every five years, once a year. I just had a meeting with the representatives from Noah about how we can approve that grant. And we will be reapplying once the RFP is released, the mayor should, you know, I hopes that maybe we get funded the next round. And then I just submitted a letter of intent to apply for the NIPW National Coastal Resilience Fund Grant. They'll review that and it's an, it's an application by invite only. So hopefully we'll be hearing back from them and getting funding that you're invited to apply. Go ahead, slide. Okay, and I'd like to turn it over to Hunter. I will say that the speaker started up all the way, but it's not particularly, so we're doing our best with that. Take it away, Hunter.
Great, thanks Conrad. Hi, everybody. My name's Hunter White. I'm a Civil and Water Resources Engineer with Environmental Science Associates, or ESA. I've been working on this project for quite a while now. I was involved in the previous study as a subconsultant to Pacific Groundwater Group. So I have been involved for a while and have met quite a number of you through the process, as well as most recently, as I was out in January, performing the field assessment, analyzing the drainage system of Tierra del Mar. So today I'm going to give you a bit of an update of where we're at in the process. As Conrad mentioned at the top there, we are currently working on the hydraulic modeling and alternatives analysis, developing alternatives and developing two dimensional hydraulic model to analyze these alternatives from a hydraulic perspective, as well as other, other aspects from Habitat Recreation Features and, and infrastructure improvements as well. So as we said, we'll be reporting back on those elements at the June Town Hall. And today I'm mostly giving you an update on the data collection and analysis we've been doing so far. And the bulk of my presentation will be focused around the Tierra del Mar Drainage System Assessment and some of the work that's, that's been going on there so far. This is a concept graphic we put together that illustrates the overall restoration alternatives being proposed and being considered here. Our view is rotated, so just take note, north is down in this image. We're, we're kind of looking an aerial, oblique aerial shot from Sand Lake, looking back over Belts Marsh and towards Tierra del Mar at the top of the image there. The, the alternatives being considered around the dike breaching activity is really around the location and size of the breach that would be most effective for Habitat restoration. And also considering that the, the belt dike is the primary trail connection out to the Shell Network at the park. And so a goal for the, the dike breaching activity is to maintain that trail connectivity. We're also looking at locations, different locations for setback dikes to provide flood protection and drainage function for Tierra del Mar. Other internal improvements within the marsh, such as new tidal channels and filling some of the linear drainage ditches are being considered. And then as Conrad mentioned, we're also looking at the future culvert replacements along Sand Lake Road at Renneke Creek, Belts Creek, and No Name Creek, or the East Marsh Crossing. And, and then in addition to that, we're also looking at Tierra del Mar's drainage system and identifying deficiencies in the system. Really mostly to understand how water is coming off of Tierra del Mar and draining into the marsh for the purposes of our hydraulic modeling, but also to potentially identify some improvements that could be made in Tierra del Mar to improve the functionality and address some of the localized flooding issues that, that residents experience. So we've gotten started in this phase of the work with some additional data collection. We conducted, our, our subconsultant NS Consulting, conducted some drone aerial surveys and collected new LiDAR data. These are a couple of images of the LiDAR elevation data that was collected through this process. And you'll be seeing a lot of this featured as we move forward in the presentation and, and through the, the design process as well. We also, in addition to the aerial survey, had a ground survey, ground control points, as well as topographic survey in select locations. And particularly at a lot of the culverts, just resurveying the culverts and making sure that we have those elevations nailed down as we, as we move forward in design and, and modeling. We had statewide land surveying, a professional land surveyor on our team for this project as well. We have also deployed additional water level monitoring instrumentation to supplement prior water level monitoring that, that has been collected over the years. One of the, you know, main reasons, in addition to just collecting current data, is because, as Conrad mentioned, the, the condition at the tide gate has changed since the 2017 data was collected. At that time, there was part of the, the tide gate, some of the boards were still present on the tide gate. And at this point, it appears that all of the boards are now missing. So these are just a few shots of the water level monitoring wells or casings that you may see out there when you're walking out along the dike or, or in other locations around the project area. These are a couple of videos, as, as we were mentioning, and you can see, this is when we've got a high tide out, out in Sand Lake and water is really funneling into the, into the culvert there that's underwater. As we said, the tide gate is completely missing now, so water is going to be sucked in through that, that culvert. And, and both on incoming tides, as well as on the outgoing drainage, we're seeing really high velocities. And as I mentioned there as well, the, you can see a lot of the erosion that's occurring around, around the box culvert. And you can see how this water is really cycling through and, and creating scour in the vicinity of, of both sides of the culvert and, and really undermining the box culvert itself. Again, just kind of a, a quick look at where you can see the, the soil loss here of the embankment around the, the culvert. At lower tides, you can see that it is actually undermined at this point to some degree. We put one logger further out in Sand Lake. It's, it's been a, something that we've seen in the water level data is that Sand Lake doesn't fully drain out. We, we never see the full low tides experienced in the ocean. At the tide gate itself, former tide gate location, water levels typically drop to about five feet in ABD 88, so about five, five foot elevation. We have seen in this water level data that further out in the lake, the water does drop a little bit further down to about three feet, but not, as I said, experiencing the full low tide that you would in the ocean. We've got some additional loggers around the perimeter of the project area. This one is at the East Marsh Crossing or at No Name Creek upstream of Sand Lake Road. We have a logger deployed in the, the north ditch or the northwest ditch in Tierra del Mar, just downstream of Pollock Ave. And we are in the process of doing water level data analysis and utilizing this for calibration of the, the hydraulic model. This is just a quick glimpse of some of the data that's been collected, but we will be diving into this in much more detail at the next town hall meeting. So I'm really going to move on here to the work that's been done so far in Tierra del Mar, evaluating the stormwater and drainage system. As I mentioned, you know, the main goal of this effort really is to understand the drainage patterns and locations of hydraulic, hydrologic inputs for the 2D Hecras model that we've built. And then also to identify system deficiencies, taking in a lot of, a lot of information from residents about problems that, that you all are experiencing and looking at potential improvements that could be implemented, either as part of this project or, or as future county or community projects. So, you know, starting back in 2015 or possibly even before that, Oregon State Parks has been receiving reports and photo data sets from residents showing us images and, and kind of accounts of the flooding and drainage issues. I will be using some of those in the, in the presentation moving forward. In October of this past year, we, we had our first town hall as, as part of this phase of work. And kind of starting at that point, we've been receiving additional input from residents on unknown flooding and drainage issues, such as areas that hold water, ponding areas that don't drain well, blocked drainage ditches and, and pipes. Any damage or functional deficiencies in the system and, and septic system issues that folks experience. And any really desired drainage improvements that, that people are interested in. So taking in a lot of this information and developing a summary of, of what may be able to be done for some improvements there. As part of this phase of the project, in, in October, additional site visits in December and, and January have occurred. And then in January, I was, was on site for a few days. I met with quite a few of you and, and meeting with you in person at, at your properties and really taking a close look at problems that y'all are experiencing. And then I did a really detailed walk of all of the side streets and, and assessing issues there, which, some of which I'll, I'll be sharing today. And so today I'm really, again, providing a progress update. We will be developing conclusions and kind of a suite of potential improvements that we'll be presenting at the next town hall on June 17th, as, as Conrad mentioned. So you may have seen this slide before. This was really an early assessment of some of the ponding that, that's reported in Tierra del Mar and relating that really to a lot of the closed basins, depressional areas that don't have really ways for water to drain out other than infiltrating into the ground, which can be challenging during periods of high groundwater and, and intense rainfall. On the right here, we have some of the larger storm events that occurred during that previous 2015 to 2017 period. Here's kind of a glimpse of one of the main tools that I've been using for looking at drainage patterns, identifying closed basins, being this LiDAR elevation map. And we, we have broader LiDAR sets from 2009, additional LiDAR photogrammetry data sets collected by and developed by Oregon State Parks. And then most recently, we've flown additional high resolution LiDAR across Tierra del Mar and, and the marsh as well. And I really like using this color ramp or elevation display that, that really does help pop out these patterns. And again, you know, use this as a, a primary tool for evaluating drainage patterns. And you can see here on the left side, some of the, the field work and, and using this tool. If you met with me in the field, you likely saw this and, and talked through some of these locations as well. So this, again, will, will be presenting in more detail later, but this is a glimpse of really the start of some of our drainage system mapping that we're developing, both in just identifying the different sub-basins and drainage patterns within Tierra del Mar, inventorying of the culverts and ditch segments, and using that to, to identify potential improvements. You know, this is one specific location that has come up a number of times from, from residents on Austin Ave, lovingly referred to as Lake Austin. And, you know, this is a great example of, of a closed basin that has no outlet for drainage. Water is, is kind of draining down into this, this low point and, and really no effective way to get that water out. This is the most obvious situation like this, but there are quite a few other locations that have similar closed basin depressions. So I'll kind of start from the north end and, and move south. Zooming in here on the LiDAR map, you really can see a lot of the detail popping out from this, the north ditch or the northwest ditch and this kind of western sub-basin of Tierra del Mar. You can see the, the warmer colors really is a dividing line, both for surface water drainage and winds up with the, the groundwater divide identified by Pacific Groundwater Group in the previous phase as well. You know, just, I'll kind of call out some of the features that we see here from the northwest ditch, the really obvious ditch channel pattern here that you see that drains off the western, kind of northwestern side of Tierra del Mar. Jasmine Ave, you can see, has a, a pretty obvious depressional basin that, that we'll see in photos a little bit later. You know, interestingly too, we see some certain high ground or, or, you know, hot, warm colored features, which are actually elevated septic drain fields, septic sand filters. So again, really high level of detail in this elevation data. You can see here on Pier Ave, closed basin, Holly Ave has a, a closed basin on Pier Ave. You can, you can see a lot of the drainage ditches connecting into Sand Lake Road Ditch. And notably, as I'll, I'll get into later, certain locations that don't have even drainage out to Sand Lake Road Ditch. And here's just kind of starting to annotate a little bit, as, as I said, this western sub-basin and the, the drainage pattern, where a lot of this water enters Tierra del Mar, or excuse me, enters Belts Marsh from the, from the west side. We also have the East Marsh drainage that contributes to Belts Marsh through the Menan Creek culvert under Sand Lake Road. And, and the main drainage feature here being that the ditch along Sand Lake Road that, that crosses each one of these streets with a culvert and in some cases, much longer culvert sections under several streets at a time. Again, really starting from the downstream end of Tierra del Mar, is one of the biggest bottlenecks in, in the system here is the Roma Ave crossing culvert. And this is a couple of photos from 2017. This first one here on the left, looking downstream or to the north, and you can see water impounded upstream of the culvert. Well, at initially the, the same time, that culvert is free flowing. It's not backed up. It's not, you know, backwatered by tides. It is, is just constrained by the, the size of the pipe and the capacity of this, this 12 inch pipe out there. So this is certainly potential for improvement of, of upsizing that culvert to alleviate a bottleneck in the system and, and get things flowing a little bit better. This is a photo provided by a resident of Pier Ave, one of those closed basins that I pointed out earlier, that, that doesn't really have effective drainage to, to get that water away. Here at, at Jasmine Ave, we've got a, you can almost barely see it. There is a culvert under here and another, you know, small 12 inch pipe that, that's plugged up at the, at the inlet. You know, just, just noting, even while I was out there, kind of with my, my boot, kicked away some of the debris and, and started to get it flowing a little bit better with, you know, even just a, you know, one sweep of the foot. So, you know, really there are maintenance activities that could be performed on a regular basis that would keep things flowing a little bit better. And again, you know, these small pipes are much more prone to clogging as well than if you were to upsize the pipes. Again, here's kind of a, another look more at this western, northwestern drainage basin. And yeah, I guess you can kind of see, again, other, other ponded areas with, with poor drainage during one of the bigger storms that's been experienced during the monitoring period. Moving south a little bit, we're, we're kind of getting into the, the Holly Ave and Gardenia and Austin Ave area. Some things to point out here, which I think I annotate a little bit more in a second, but at Gardenia there, you can see some of these ditches, you know, really well defined and, and kind of recently cleaned out ditches on, on Sand Lake Road, as well as the, the side street ditches that convey water from the side street out to Sand Lake Road Ditch. And you can see a, a major difference here between the side street drainage on, at the lower end of Gardenia compared to Holly Ave, where, you know, there are no side street drainage ditches or swales. And in fact, the, the culvert from Gardenia all the way down past Pier goes through. Uh, goes through, you know, beneath Holly and and Holly Ave in particular has no way to drain that water to the Sand Lake Road ditch. Uh, we'll take a closer look at that as well and. And um, here just some photos of Gardenia and uh, and and kind of zoom in of that. Um, LiDAR image showing showing the drainage ditches there. Uh, you can see even some of these are, you know, likely hand excavated by by some of the residents there. Uh, just just trying to cut in small flow paths to connect out to the to the main drainage ditch. Uh, here is that long culvert section and you know, it lines up with a bus stop location. And so there are. Shoulder uses along Sand Lake Road that. You know, are a constraint for uh, providing drainage, you know, for example, if if there were. Uh, a a a way of opening up this ditch segment or daylighting this this ditch. Uh, to provide more connectivity options, you know, that is a conflict with with this bus stop location and. Um. And and then over here on the right, I I guess on on the left showing this blue line, which is indicative of where the culvert is located and lining up here on the. LiDAR image, this long uh, yellow line, which is a a a long culvert segment. Um. And here's just another view back in the other direction. Uh, here's a uh, excerpt from our drainage map that's being developed and and you can see as well the. The yellow being the the ditches, those small ditch segments that have been cut um. Along Gardenia and the ditch segments of of Sand Lake Road. And then again, these blue are all the small culverts at each of the side streets and driveways. And again, just driving home that point that. You know, this really long ditch, uh, or excuse me, really long culvert segment and noted ponding on Holly Ave that just doesn't have any way to get that water out. Um, about midway down this really long culvert segment, um. The the pipe was was pulled out. You know, this is a photo back from twenty seventeen and I I believe this occurred just before that. Uh, you can see the pieces of the pipe laid out here on the side and, you know, if you were to look closely, you can see that the the pipe was. Almost fully clogged with sediment and again, being small as well as really long, uh, being prone to plugging. Um, this is that same location now, so really grown grown back in. This is a, you know, small open ditch segment, but. Um, again, just kind of a a look at um, how that long culvert uh, has been. Has been affected and and modified. So now here moving to Lake Austin and again, one of the the most obvious closed basins. Uh, again, photos provided from landowners from from twenty seventeen, some of the the more extreme flooding, although. Uh, sounds like this is a fairly regular occurrence in this area. Uh. You know, again, from even even before that in twenty sixteen. And in addition to, you know, here up in the the top LiDAR photo, you can see that that closed basin, the the cool blue and and green colors. Uh, kind of surrounded by by the red warmer colors of higher ground. Um, and then there's kind of a similar thing going on at at Austin Ave where it would connect to the Sand Lake Road ditch where where they, we do have some open ditch segments, but then. The south side of Austin, which does not have uh, really an ability for that water to drain to the ditch. And yeah, here again, just really focusing in on that closed basin at the end of Austin. And another view showing the the drainage uh, flow direction areas and 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 sub-basins that have been defined. Uh, this is another way that we're looking at uh, drainage and elevation patterns. Uh, on these side streets is a is an elevation profile. Uh, the blue line here being the uh, center line cut along uh, Austin Ave and. Um, just for orientation, we've got the the Pacific Ocean out out here on the right side of the image, the dune climbing up to about twenty nine feet. And then coming down into uh, the side street. We we do see kind of the depressional area here that that is uh, Lake Austin or that closed basin. So you can really see where that's. Um, how that's defined. We're also looking at uh, profiles of the the ditches or or lack of ditches. Along there where where sometimes you do see the ditch line being a little bit lower than the center line of the road, but. At that high point, which is the dividing line between uh, the sub-basin, the, you know. This, which is is kind of hard to tell, but the the side uh, ditch lines also match up with the center line, really indicating to us that there. There is no drainage away. Uh, moving further south now, again, a lot of a lot of the similar patterns pop out to us here. Uh, closed depressional areas, uh, kind of at the end of Coates here. Uh, on Willu, there's there's some depressional areas and and again, being able to see some locations that have defined ditches and and other. Again, kind of longer pipe segments, limiting ability to to drain water off. Um, yep, and here's some just ponding, uh, when I was out there in January and. You know, I'll mention this later, but you can see the utility markings of of waterline. Uh, water lines here on all of the side streets as well, which is a consideration for. Um, or even a constraint for cutting in new ditches or putting in pipes. Um, not not precluding those activities, but certainly something that needs to be considered uh, from a cost standpoint. Uh, this is another location of another uh, lake area that's that we were. Uh, told about um, here on Eloise and this is a bit drier conditions this day, fortunately. Um, but. Uh, let's see, I I I may have a another photo of of Eloise ponding. Uh, but very similar, you know, not quite as obvious as something that we see on on Austin Ave, but. But a small closed basin that that doesn't drain out well. Uh, here at the end of Coates, I wanted to point this out. Um, this is a location where there has been, you know, recent. Cutting in of a a new swale, kind of a a form of a drainage ditch to connect out to Sand Lake Road. Um, of a fairly, you know, good example of. Very minor subtle grading that that could be done to to just provide positive drainage out to the ditch line. Um, you know, that being said, this this uh, grading that that was done here is is kind of blocked a little bit of the culvert outlet and so. Uh, while again, this subtle grading is certainly helpful to get that drainage uh, flowing. Um, there's a little bit of cleanup work there to do and to make sure that all these these pipes are are flowing as well. Uh, here a couple of different images through time of of that lo- same location. Um, this is probably a little tough to digest for for somebody just looking at it, but. These are all of the profiles of all of the side streets in Tierra del Mar and. You know, some some of the different things we've identified in each of of the individual ones. Uh, really just overlaid all in one location, uh, so that we can kind of see not only just how each road relates in elevation. But also seeing uh, some of those sub-basin divides and and uh, closed basin areas. Uh, kind of jumping all the way back down or or north to Roma Ave. You know, we don't quite have that closed basin at the end here, uh, just a little bit of it, but. Um. But an another profile that we extended up across the dune, climbing up to thirty four feet. Um, and then all the way down here to to the Sand Lake Road culvert and Sand Lake Road itself being at about thirteen point four feet. Right at that location and and uh, the small, the twelve inch culvert that I pointed out earlier, uh, with an inverted elevation of eleven point eight. And then another look at Pollock, just a couple uh, streets to the south there where where we really do see more of that. Uh, subbait, the the sub-basin defined here with the with the culvert crossing. And then again, at at back to Eloise with this. Center line profile view of of the dune here, a little bit lower, uh, where where the dune extends to the south and actually have heard some reports of. Of overtopping uh, of the dune and in this location and and even more so further to the south there. Uh, again, not as prominent here of of a basin where where Lake Eloise is described, but. Uh, but nonetheless, you can see this this uh, dip in the profile. Okay, yeah, and here's here's the flooding images of of Lake Eloise that again, line up with this depressional area. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, you know, constraints to improvements here or or really just a consideration that need would need to be factored in or. Or how some of these improvements would interact with utilities. Um, this is on Coats Ave where we do have the waterline marked, um, other other utilities, power. Uh, overhead, it looks like some underground power and telecom as well. Um, and so certainly a constraint to to improvements uh, and which would add cost. And then, as I mentioned, some of the the shoulder uses of kind of widened out shoulders along Sand Lake Road and and most prominently, this bus stop. That's right over the top of the uh, that longest culvert that that does seem to have a lot of plugging issues. Um, and then I guess I just wanted to mention uh, a bit of the kind of competing goals with. Uh, you know, drainage versus water quality treatment. And when we typically install. Uh, swales and you know, for the purpose of water quality treatment, you know, this left image is, you know, heavily vegetated. Uh, with, you know, mostly native wetland vegetation and um, slow moving water, you know, through this vegetation. Really has a great benefit for treating that water, uh, but nonetheless, it does slow water down. And so. Uh, you know, this both with regular storm water as well as. Uh, some of the pollutants that are contributed to the area by by septic systems where, you know, the slow moving water really does have. A benefit for treating that water and and making it cleaner by the time it reaches the wetland. Um, but that's kind of, you know, co- uh, contradicting. The other goal of drainage and efficient movement of water and getting that water to to move. Uh, here on the right is the kind of the lower portion of the ditch, uh, just south of Roma Ave. Where, you know, a lot less vegetation certainly would flow a lot better, but but would not be providing as much water quality benefit. Um, and then, you know, I guess I wanted to just show a couple of photos of. Uh, some of the septic system improvements that that have been made over over the years and, you know, starting pretty far back. Uh, not not new technology by any means, uh, but these elevated sand filters. This is a. A shot of uh, kind of a boxed in sand filter septic drainage. Uh, the traditional, there are a number of traditional septic systems and drain fields still in place and and those are the ones that are are most. Uh, subject to impacts due to ponding. Um, and and but but really there are, you know, these sorts of solutions of elevating the the drain field. And uh, other kind of more modern advanced septic treatment systems that. Uh, can function with with water, uh, with with high groundwater.
I'd like to comment there on the elevated ones.
Yeah, please.
You. Those systems are not going to be put in anymore from what I've heard because the failure rate, they only last ten years. So the likelihood of getting any more of those pretty slim. Good to know.
Yeah, and the, you know, again, these, uh, I believe this is in a Renco system or an Advantex, uh, which is is kind of the modern. Uh, technology for for septic drain, uh, septic treatment when. To traditional drain fields are are not effective. Uh, but but thank you for that that comment. Appreciate that. Um, and you know, we have started to obviously develop a. Kind of a running list and and summary of potential improvements that could be made. Uh, which as we said, we're really, we're working on preparing that memo, uh, some of these summary maps. And inventory of deficiencies and potential improvements and look forward to presenting that all back to you. Uh, at the next town hall meeting. Um, you know, as I mentioned too, we're we're really. Studying the the movement of water, the the locations of input to the marsh, how those different point locations of of water input would. Uh, would drain in and how how uh, different locations of setback dike alignment. Would interact differently with those those uh, point locations of water input. Uh, so. Uh, let's see here. Yeah. So so again, just kind of revisiting the overall concept designs for. The title Wetland Reconnection Project, uh, which again, we're we're working on right now. We've got our our. Existing conditions model, two D model up and running. We've started to develop and model some of the alternatives and. Uh, really today wanted to give you just the progress update and let you know where we're at in the process as well as um. Looking forward to to presenting more in detail and and hydraulic modeling results and uh, detailed alternatives analysis. At the next town hall meeting. Uh, so that that really concludes my presentation and and our our larger presentation today. Uh, we're open to questions and uh, as I said, you know, I I met with a lot of you in. In January, uh, both, you know, over the phone, through email. Thank you so much for for sending great photos and. And documentation that that helps us, uh, and and you as well and um. Yeah, wanted to give a a, you know, wholehearted thank you to to all of the folks that I did meet with and uh, happy to hear more if you. You know, didn't get a chance to to meet out in the field or or uh, provide your comments, please do. We still want to hear from you and. Uh, we've got a couple of email addresses up here. This is Conrad's uh, email at Tulum McKeshe Stories Partnership. And a project email address that's been set up to to receive uh, project emails. Um, and yeah, with that, I will open it up to questions, comments, and uh, if anybody else. At uh, T E P or State Parks want to say anything, um, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Hunter. Yeah. If his presentation merits anything, there used to be a drainage ditch that was along the west end. And there's not been any of that at all, so as a kid. Interesting. But um, basically, for example, the pier streets. Where it's been being created, I'm sorry. There is apps built, it's elevated. That's exactly where, because as a kid, I used to collect. News, promos and stuff. So there was a lot of.
Do you want to point out with the laser pointer where you're talking about?
My finger worked too.
Oh, yeah, whatever works.
Most of the larger than the cat here.
Yeah, whatever works.
So basically, it almost follows exactly where, the only reason I brought it up is it's really following where the pooling is.
Okay.
So from the late seventies, I lived on Holly here and and Eloise, but. Basically, right along here and your house, you're kind of up.
I'm up.
So between you and.
In the alley.
Between you and the long stay frame. There, it was about that deep.
Yeah, there was a creek running through there every every winter.
Exactly. So I don't see any of that and there was basically it would start all the way up to Holly. And we kind of go down and I'm kind of wondering if some of it ran out of bin. Out of the country for twenty years, but like here with. This development, this backup here, they've kind of completely closed everything down. I'm kind of almost wondering if maybe. But there's no outflow there anymore and such, but it used to be, like I said, especially in the early eighties. There was, we actually live right now where the. The lake pier is, this year it wasn't there at all, but like he said, there used to be a creek kind of really going there and it was one of those things as a kid. Do you hang out? I was the only kid there, so. How do we entertain ourselves?
It had a full run of the creek through there in the wintertime.
Yeah, and it flowed.
It originated up there.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, by Austin, it flowed all the way down, but it's one of those things. I'm kind of wondering if. Not to get into the public policy or the til- of the county stuff, but for example. The beach access, what is it, in Pollock and Roma, they're basically closed down now. Some would say, hey, this is kind of our block of property, so. And if you kind of look at the newer houses from the late nineties so forth. Tend to kind of be towards where that creek used to be, so as they backfill. Further engineering stuff to build, I can see how it might get. I don't know if it's one of those things that they just said that the county hates our property, we backfill if there's no. Like official record of it being there, but it might be something to try to look into. And you can still see some remnants from like. Here behind his place or below his place, it's kind of been filled in, but I know north and south of there, what is that street between Holly? You can drive between Holly and what are the next ones?
Gardenia?
Yeah.
That's not a street, that's an alley.
Right, exactly, but that was exactly where.
That's where the film went.
Exactly.
So Phil went right there, somebody. The street wasn't even in, Phil went.
Hunter, were you able to hear all of that?
I was, yeah. Yeah, and I, you know, that's certainly something that I've noticed, kind of walking down. Holly and and Gardenia kind of through this area and even Austin, you know, that that uh, you know, we we have these closed basin it. It would appear that historically, there would have been more of a continuous swell or drainage, uh, creek potentially even. Uh, connecting a lot of these areas down, but with, you know, various fills of of the roads of the. Kind of the the back alley areas and. And and even, you know, some of the infill houses as well have have kind of cut off some of these drainage patterns that that could have provided more effective drainage to the north.
That's great input. Appreciate that. No, it's really, that's interesting.
I don't know if the fill was all that bad. I don't, you know, I don't know how to interpret. You know, is it a good thing or a bad thing?
Fill can be a very bad thing. And Hunter, I was out with Hunter in January. And we were trying to look at all of the changes to that drainage. Because one of the things, if you look down, Light Art, there's an old remnant, dune literally bust straight down. Tierra del Mar, and it serves as a groundwater flow divide and a drainage divide. So, you know, so that that means that the water on the west side of that divide is forming part of our Lake Austins and all of that kind of stuff. And yes, and even in just this last couple of years, I've watched people hauling in sand, doing new construction. I wasn't structures up. And that should not be allowed by the county and it shouldn't be happening. It's really messing with our water.
Well, how did, what is it, one south or is it, yeah, one street south? I think it's Gardinia where they put in that new house. That is surprisingly high fill. Well, you're pushing it onto other sites.
Yeah, I knew there were signs. Yeah, it's going to be really interesting to see how it all shakes out. But my favorite ones, I don't remember which street it is, there's a house where they actually built it over the drainage ditch. The drainage is rest.
Oh, yeah, that's down on Pollock. Yeah, it flows underneath the bed, in fact.
And there's still big flat ones on the south side of that house. So.
Interesting. Does anybody else have questions for Hunter or for myself? Any other comments?
I would just, the last one that's bothered me for years is that that trick that I mentioned right there at the state park edge. It used to go underneath and the culvert was, I don't even think it was a 12-inch culvert. It's plugged. And it used to shoot across here right where the restrooms are and go behind the restrooms. Lately, divert outside of the dam.
Right, you're talking Reniki Creek.
Reniki Creek.
Yes.
And Reniki Creek is no small creek in the wintertime. No, not at all. That don't count for, I don't know what your stats show, but I gotta say it was pretty close to 50% because I know what flows down the other creek.
Absolutely. No, and and those are, those are going to be addressed. Tillamook County Public Works is deeply involved with improvements to Sand Lake Road. And all three of those crossings are going to be addressed.
So if they could put bigger culverts in there, plus convert it back where it used to be down the side channel.
I believe there are going to be bridges, actually. They're not even going to be culverts.
Okay, but if they keep it going down, you know, there's a place that you can do it right there at the park? Or where it's going alongside the road? If it goes alongside the road, it goes into the estuary. If it takes the first avenue, it'll go down behind the outhouses. And though there's a separate channel there that it goes out, it doesn't even go behind it. Yes, back in the estuary, it goes out just in front of it.
Right. Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
I mean, I don't know why you're trying to push three volumes of water through there when you could get two and really make some substantial changes.
Yeah, I know that the county is trying to fundraise right now too. I think that that will be the first one that they're addressing. So that'll be a topic, maybe not at the next town hall, but as funding comes in, we will be taking comments on that as they begin the engineering process.
I think they'll find there's an expense here for clearing trees out of there. Oh, and all that, just putting in a.
I can't remember Reniki Creek, actually. Like, it's actually, there's already a little back there. If you look at the mass, you actually can see where there's a natural cutout from the estuary. That's where it used to be. And I'm trying to remember, it wasn't the Farrell's that were used that much, but they cleared a lot of property. And you're talking east of Sand Lake. Yes, exactly. So that's when they actually Certainly a consideration, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's all state park land anyway. So to redo that, to bring it down closer north of the parking spot even. I mean, that's all state plan.
Actually, the outward, the outwall where it comes out on the north side of the dike would be on top.
Yeah.
Miller's property. So there would be a section there of maybe 100 feet that would be on.
And that's what a natural gale or valley is, it's actually just like where. Great.
Thanks for those those comments. And and, you know, we are taking a look at at that. You know, as Conrad mentioned, this this particular phase and contract here is is really focused on the estuary reconnection portion of the project. But but we are also taking a look at Reniki Creek, working with the county on evaluating the, you know, the the different alignments that have existed in the past, currently do today. And and trying to determine really what the best location is for a crossing. You know, there are nuances to that, as you all are discussing right now of, you know, where it used to flow. You know, what what was kind of the historic condition versus, you know, the modified condition and rerouting of the creek that occurred when the dike went in. And and the fact that the existing culvert that the that Reniki Creek previously flowed through, you know, was overwhelmed by gravels and completely filled in, redirecting the creek down down the roadside ditch to that low point in Sand Lake Road, which has been a kind of a blowout location on the roadway. And the county is is kind of constantly keeping up with with maintaining the erosion on on either side of the culvert there when water overtops the road. So that is a priority for County Public Works right now as as far as these three creek crossings. That is certainly the one that that's the highest priority for them right now. And again, while this project is focusing on the estuary reconnection, there is effort underway right now to evaluate Reniki Creek and how best to improve that road crossing. So, you know, with that said, if there are other comments and other thoughts about about Reniki Creek, it would be great to follow up on that, either through, you know, outreach through the email addresses or we can set up a additional call or or meeting to take a look at that and hear your thoughts.
Cool. Well, I think that that'll probably end it for today. I will say that I know there was a mistake with regard to the email for the Tierra del Mar Community Association. And so not everybody got the invitation to this meeting. I'll take responsibility for that. And hopefully, the people that couldn't make it can listen to this recording. And if anybody who is listening to this recording has questions or comments or concerns, please reach out to me. And, you know, I can either address those privately via email. And we will certainly bring up any comments that I get between now and then at the next community meeting, which once again is June 17th, same time at this room and also on Zoom. Are there any remote listeners that might have? Oh, yeah, that's a great, that's a great point. Is there anybody on that is connected via Zoom that has any questions? Does it?
I haven't seen anything in the chat.
Okay, perfect. You've been following the chat already?
Yeah, no comments in the chat there.
Perfect. Well, with that, then I think we'll end it for today. But I appreciate everybody coming out for this. And, you know, it's it's great to have the community involved in this project. Thanks so much, Hunter.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. Yep, I look forward to seeing you all at the at the next meeting in June and I'll be there in person.
Have a good day.